So I wish to call to order the Wednesday, August 16th, meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the Natu Hill Room. We'll now have our public statement read by Commissioner Thomas.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. And now we have department updates. First on, I believe, is Ms. Kelly from the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just a few updates for you. Statewide Indiana, as of August 8th, passing an increase in the number of emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses. There has been a noted increase in reported COVID cases as well. The Indiana Department of Health is changing the way that they report COVID cases. So beginning soon, only lab facilities and testing sites who report electronically will be required to continue to report COVID test results. We are still expecting the flu vaccines to begin shipping around Labor Day, and we do not have an exact date at this time.
Thank you. That's a little disconcerting to hear that possible COVID cases are on the rise, especially if it's causing emergency room admissions. Any comments or questions from my colleagues?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll see you soon, I think. Are there any other departments with an update? I see that we have Jackie Nestor Jellin on line with her hand raised. Please go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to go ahead and share my screen with an update that we have from the Planning So we are going to be hosting four listening sessions this month and the beginning of next month. And so if you were to go to our website, monroeco.com, we have listed here the update with the dates for the next four meetings. We're going to be hosting listening sessions for folks in the county that wish to come and speak about the draft zoning map and the draft use table and how that may impact their property. We will have planners on staff that will be able to assist people with being able to understand what their current zoning is, what their proposed zoning is, and as well as getting questions answered about what may be changing. So we've put together this flyer, which is available on the MonroeCBO.com website, but I'd also like to read out loud the locations and timing for the four listening sessions. So the first meeting will be held on Thursday, August 24th. That will be at 5:30 PM, and that's at the new Southwest Library location, 900 West Wood Pike, Room AB. Also on the MonroeCBO.com page, we have Zoom information linked for each of the four meetings. It'll be the same Zoom link for all four meetings if people cannot attend. The second meeting will be at Ivy Tech Community College. That will be Tuesday, August 29th, 5:30 PM. And that's 200 North Daniels Way, Lantern Hall. The third meeting is the Ellisville Town Hall, Tuesday, August 31st, at 5:30. That's 1150 West Guy and the Crown Drive, and that will be in the Town Hall room. And then the fourth meeting will be at the Government Center here, Monroe County Government Center, Thursday, September 5th, at 5:30. That's 501 North Morton Street on the first floor, Room 100B. So this flyer, we're going to try to post this around town, but also, if, like I said, if people want access to it, it is posted on the Monroe County website as well as the MonroeCBO.com website. And this is the best place to go for the most accurate and up-to-date information. I also want to note that for the meeting, we will have a one-pager for people to fill out. We will help you to, like I said, understand what your current zoning is, what's changing with the draft zoning map. And then on the second page, we have some frequently asked questions that we've been getting, such as what is zoning? Why does it matter? What is the CBO? If I speak during the listening session, how will my testimony affect the CBO? And there's also QR codes to each of the relevant chapters or modules that we will be discussing. So I know it's quite a bit of information, but if anyone can attend or join via Zoom, we will be able to help anyone to best understand these changes and hopefully simplify it and make sure all questions are answered and that they can speak to the elected and appointed county officials that will be ultimately approving and recommending approval for the CBO. So we are excited for these four meetings, and we hope to get a great turnout. So if anyone is listening and has any questions, please feel free to contact our office, 812-349-2560. We also have an email address at planningoffice@co.montreal.in.us. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and we hope to see you there.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't. No, this is, thank you so much for bringing this and organizing this. This is a great opportunity for the public to be able to ask additional questions. And QR codes for each of the sections is really helpful, plus links. So this website's going to be a great resource for the community. So thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you for having me.
I'll just point out, too, that the government, Monroe County Government Center that you referenced is at the north end of the Showers Building. It's not here in the courthouse.
Yes, and there is pre-parking for people. We try to make sites accessible for parking-wise and also for people in different areas of the county. So hopefully people will be able to attend, and there won't be any barriers.
Thank you. Is there any other department with an update? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for August 9th, 2023.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No, I wasn't here, but I was at the meeting, so I feel comfortable voting on it. Thank you.
Excellent. I did send a couple of updates to Ms. Freeman, so when I checked yesterday, she had taken care of this. So I feel comfortable with the two. So all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 9th, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I feel like we're singing a duet up here.
Yes.
Next item.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable August 16th, 2023.
Second.
And we have Ms. Malone here with us today.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Malone with the Auditor's Office. The accounts payable claims docket for August 16th, 2023 totals $1,190,78.93.
Any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
I don't. I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on approval of the claims for the accounts payable August 16th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we have no reports, and so we'll move on to new business.
I move approval of the 2023 municipal election polling sites for the general election.
Second.
And we have Ms. Brown here. Good morning. It's nice to see you.
Nicole Brown, Monroe County Clerk, and thank you for your time this morning. On behalf of the Monroe County Election Board, I am presenting for your adoption and signature the list of 25 polling sites for the municipal general in November. You would have signed a similar one prior to the primary. If you use polling sites in the primary, you have to use them again for the general. And so we just need your signatures on that. I have brought with me a clean copy, and I'm happy to provide that to whomever you would like and then come back and collect it to give it back to the Monroe County Election Board. And unless you have further questions for me, I won't take up your time.
No, I will just note that this is also the MCCSC referendum, which is why there are more polling sites than just the city election, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, we only, there's only one contested race for City of Bloomington, correct?
Correct.
Right. Right. I don't have any questions or comments. Other than that, is there any public comment on this item? These are, I know, locations we've used before successfully.
Yes.
They're ADA compliant, HAPA compliant, so excellent. Yeah. So all those in favor of approving the 2023 municipal election polling sites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of the mitigation property name.
Second.
And we have Ms. Whitmer with us.
Good morning.
Morning.
The park board in July voted to approve a recommendation to the commissioners for the property located at 6175 South Victor Pike to be named the Limestone Greenway Park. The Limestone Greenway diverts dead center of this particular property, and it will become a future trailhead. Do you have questions or concerns?
One of the things that concerned me was the fact that mitigation properties have not yet been released to the public, and so we worked with legal staff to clarify that it won't be until at least 2026, or it may be later, that this mitigation property would become available to be used as the trailhead. But we also understand your concerns about grant applications and your documentation and planning and preparing. So Mr. Cockrell, do I need to make this part of the motion?
Probably.
Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and revise my motion to adopt the name Limestone Greenway Park for 6175 South Victor Pike, but only once this mitigation property is released to us. So in other words, the name is a proposed name until it becomes effective, and that will not be before 2026.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Does that make sense, I hope?
Yes. I suspect staff or whatnot might start referring to it as this, but not to the public. It is locked and fenced.
Yeah.
But it would help with the in our conversations.
We figured it could be used internally without any problems, but just not released publicly.
That would be fine.
Oh, we have another microphone with an issue. Is there any public comment on this item? If not, I'll call for a vote on naming of the mitigation property once the, it has been released from, I guess it's in doubt, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Whitmer.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval, I'm going to combine items C and D. Move approval of Fleming Interior Group office furniture for the surveyor's office. Fund name 2020 GeoBond, fund number 4813, in the amount of $63,384.34. And at the same time, also move for approval of the lockers for the surveyor office from Fleming Interior, same fund name, same fund number, in the amount of $1,657.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here.
Good morning, commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet Manager. We'll soon be moving the Monroe County Surveyors' Office from the attic of the Health Building over to Monroe County Government Center, Showers. And I've been working with Tron and staff for a couple months on this now. So these items are related to this project. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by Fleming Interior Group in the amount of $63,384.34 to design, furnish, and install new office furniture and related equipment at 301 North Morton Street, Suites 205 and 206A for the Monroe County Surveyors' Office. There's a 10-year warranty on solid surfaces, a five-year warranty on high-wear mechanical parts, and a three-year warranty on wool felt and mesh materials.
And then could you go ahead and talk about the lockers also?
Oh, the request is to approve the proposal submitted by Fleming Interior Group in the amount of $1,657 to furnish and install three lockers at 301 North Morton Street, Suites 205 and 206A for the Monroe County Surveyors' Office. There's a 10-year warranty on solid surfaces, a five-year warranty on high-wear mechanical parts.
Thank you. And I noticed that we have the surveyor here. Was there any comment from anyone?
I don't really have a comment, except I'm very happy to be here today. This has been kind of something that's been evolving for several years now, and working with Richard has been a pleasure. And the Flemings Group, Mike Fleming, has been very intentative on our needs. And also, I'll just say that lockers, they're dual lockers, so that's actually six lockers. So there's, they're kind of, each one of those are two. So just wanted, I could add that. But again, I'm just looking for your support, and thank you so much, and I'm excited to be here, and so is the rest of the staff. And also, we're bringing in another full-time employee on the 28th, so this is kind of working very well to facilitate the staff needs.
Comments or questions from my colleagues?
I was just wondering when we might expect the move?
Well, I think that depends on the furniture. And how things go today, we have a meeting set up for Friday, and I'll know more about that after that meeting.
Does it seem likely that it'll be by the 28th, or?
No.
No. Okay.
No comments? Thank you. Well, this is going to be fun. I think it'll make much easier for the surveyor's office to work with the other officers, offices in the county, like the planning office, especially since they're right there together. So I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. So at this point, well, maybe, how do we get this roll call with one mic working? I guess we'll do this sequentially. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Any public comments?
Oh. Is there any other? Is there any other public comment? No, it's okay. We're good. So all those in favor of Fleming Interior Group lockers and office furniture for the surveyor's office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of Leet Electric LLC proposal for electrical receptacle installation in the jail. Wait a minute, I think you skipped one. Oh, did I? Sorry. It's all part of the fun. Oh, there we go. Okay. Move approval of EZ, or EZI File, proposal for storage cabinets for the surveyor's office. Fund name 2020 GeoBond, fund number 4813, in the amount of $8,105.45.
Second.
Mr. Kreider.
Thank you. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by EZ File in the amount of $8,105.45 to purchase three PLSS township record storage cabinets with additional accessories plus delivery to 301 North Morton Street for use by the Monroe County Surveyors' Office. EZ File provides a 10-year warranty on metal cabinets and components.
Any comment from my colleagues?
No.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on EZ File proposal for storage cabinets for the surveyor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of Leet Electric LLC proposal for electrical receptacle installation in the jail. Fund name Cumulative Capital Development Fund, fund number 1138, in the amount of $400.
Second.
Again, we have Mr. Kreider.
Thank you. The large space air purifier at the facility has multiple powering device failures. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Leet Electric LLC in the amount of $400 to install an electrical receptacle to serve as the dedicated power supply for the large space air purifier.
Any comments or questions from my colleagues? Any public comment on this item? I think that the air purifier, especially given the rise that we're seeing in possible COVID cases, is even more critical for keeping people healthy in the jail, so I appreciate the effort on this. At this point, I'll call for a vote on the Leet Electric LLC proposal for electrical receptacle installation in the jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Sturgis Garage and Record Service Agreement. Fund names County General and Public Safety Lit. Fund numbers 1,000 and 1170, in the amount based on appropriation, $236,400.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the Sturgis Garage and Record Service Agreement, and I believe Ms. Birdy is here to talk with us about that.
Yes, commissioners. This agreement was actually supposed to have been seen by you in 2021. I believe there's an error in my timeline in the attached document, which says 2022. This was during our COVID experience for the county, and this particular contract was kind of overlooked and has been sitting for a while. So this is trying to get us back on track and moving correctly and appropriately forward. It takes care of all of our county fleet, with the exception of the heavy equipment, and I believe highways, trucks are maintained, no, by, yeah, I don't think they're maintained, so highway maintains their own vehicles, even their heavy equipment, so.
Comments or questions from my colleagues? Is there any public comment? I believe it was Shakespeare who said, "All's well that ends well," so in this case, perhaps we're okay. So with that, a call for a vote on the Sturgis Garage and Record Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
I move approval of the National Center Media Safe Place Outreach Agreement. Fund name Runaway and Homeless Youth. Fund number 8120, in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Vanessa Schmidt here with us today. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. This is actually, I'm actually Sarah Jamison. I'm filling in for Vanessa. I'm the new program coordinator at the Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County. Today, we are here to ask for the approval of the contract with National Center Media. It's part of our outreach strategy, which uses digital and in-theater advertising to educate and promote awareness about our Safe Place program to youth and families in our community. The Safe Place ad will run before every PG-rated movie, as well as every 12 minutes in theaters. Our digital component of the contract focuses on what they call OTT and CTV, which shows ads also through Hulu and Amazon Prime, and the channels and streaming channels targeted and targeted devices that have interacted in theaters. Do you have any questions?
Comments or questions from my colleagues? Any public comment on this? I will note for the record, because at first it was a little confusing to me, that the campaign in the theaters is for eight weeks, from November 20th through January 14th, which coincides with a lot of the holiday times that students have off from school. But the digital impressions contract is for 26 weeks.
Yes.
Through the end of June, I believe, next year.
Yes.
So with that, given no public comment, I'll call for a vote on National Center Media Safe Place Outreach Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have an appointment today.
Yes. Yes, I'd like, I don't, oh, yes, it is working now. I'd like to move to appoint Neil Goswami to the Environmental Commission, and I believe it's a four-year appointment. I should have checked on that first.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
I actually heard Mr. Goswami speak yesterday at the Monroe County Democratic Club. He's very, very passionate about the things related to the environment, doing work with the Indiana Forest Alliance, and so I think this is a great appointment. And it's also getting the next generation involved. Sorry, I've known Neil for years, so I'm excited about this. So is there, we don't need public comment on this, do we? So with that, all those in favor of appointing Neil Goswami to the Environmental Commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. And I forgot to bring in my sheets with the, so I'm trying to find stuff that I need for announcements. Okay, I will get there soon. Sorry. First of all, I want to thank everybody who contributed diapers, wipes, and pull-ups for last week's Hoosier Hills Food Bank food distribution. Over, I think it was 826 families came through for the food distribution. We ran out of the diapers by noon, basically, which is amazing. And there was also a need for adult diapers, basically. I don't know what else to call them at this point. But, so it's my understanding that if Hoosier Hills Food Bank does this kind of food distribution, again, that they will include this in what they are offering families. But to me, when there's 826 families that come through on a Friday morning, that indicates that there is great need. There's still free COVID testing available through the Monroe County Health Department and at the health clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. And we continue to have virtual office hours. I held one on Monday. Nobody showed up, but that's the way it goes. The Monroe County Commissioners Blood Drive is again at Ivy Tech on Wednesday, August 23rd, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Thursday, August 24th, also from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. out at Ivy Tech. And then also Thursday, September 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00. Fridays, September 8th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Given that we have been experiencing more adverse weather and also hearing that potential COVID cases are on the rise, I want to urge people to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System at our county website, co.montreal.in.us. And also for Monroe County residents who are income-eligible, I will remind you that the county commissioners and county council have extended the assistance fund for those who need help paying rent or utilities. If you're in that situation, please contact your township trustee for further information. Every resident of Monroe County has a township trustee. Is there anything else from either of my colleagues? With that, we will adjourn, and we will be back here on August 23rd. We do have a work session. It is now 10:42. Should we return at 11:00? Okay, we'll see everybody back here at 11:00. Thank you. Thank you.